Let's talk two minutes.
We should all have some of your victory, or did you already do that?
No, we should do that.
We should go party.
Let's do it.
Let's do it.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November, oh my gosh, it's November already, guys. November Board of Supervisors meeting. Uh, just a reminder, this meeting is being recorded and will be posted on YouTube tomorrow. Um. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is of one of the hardest speeches I've ever heard. Especially when I'm talking to one of our parents.
I'd like to announce that the Board of Supervisors held two executive sessions uh since the last meeting, one on Friday, November tenth, to discuss the police contract, and one tonight, November thirteenth, to discuss litigation. Um, the first thing we need to do is approve the minutes of October ninth, twenty twenty-three meeting. On October sixth, well, I don't know at what, I don't know at once. The meetings of October ninth, October sixteenth, and November sixth.
So moved.
A second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Moving on to the reports. Uh, Chief Alexander.
That's here.
Uh, thank you and good evening. For the month of October twenty twenty-three, the Euclid Township Police Department officers documented one thousand one hundred fifty-five entries in the police department call reporting system. During the reporting period, the officers issued eighty-one traffic citations, they investigated thirty-four motor vehicle crashes, and they arrested twenty-one individuals. Additionally, for the month of October, the department members conducted five motor carrier details at the weigh station, resulting in nine hundred and nine commercial motor vehicles being weighed, four of which were found to be overweight. During the details, the officers also performed thirteen inspections, requiring five vehicles and one driver to be placed out of service. Sergeant McBride conducted three additional commercial motor vehicle inspections during his normal workdays, resulting in one vehicle being placed out of service. Uh, year to date, the officers have documented eleven thousand three hundred twenty-three entries in our call reporting system. They've arrested one hundred sixty individuals, they've written one thousand two hundred eighteen traffic citations, three hundred eighty-five written warnings, two hundred ninety-three crash investigations, and so far year to date, they have weighed six thousand six hundred ninety-three commercial motor vehicles.
Great, thank you. Uh, Treasurer, Mrs. Bernhardt.
Uh, good evening. Uh, through the month of October in the general fund, we have collected just over ninety-eight percent of our budgeted revenues and have spent just under eighty-two percent of our budgeted expenditures.
Sounds good, thank you. Public Works, Mr. Greenly.
Thank you. Uh, the daily average flow to the Downingtown Treatment Plant was approximately one point four two one million gallons per day, and there were no new connections to either the Dara or the Eagleview Sewer System. Uh, for the month of October, the township received two point zero four inches of rain. Uh, year to date, we're at approximately thirty-eight point four inches, which gives us a um surplus of about point four two inches for the year thus far. Um, the township is working with Gannett Fleming, uh, the township sewer engineers on repairs to the large process tank at Eagleview. Traditional um issues were discovered with the tank wall, we're working with Gannett Fleming on that now, and we hope to have some solutions by the end of this week. Um, new signs were installed along Route one hundred, Route one thirteen, Woodford Road, and Cherie Boulevard. Uh, Public Works crews responded to a hundred and thirteen PA one calls for the month of October. Uh, crews were out milling and paving the walking trail along Shell Meyer Road where there was some damage because of tree roots. Uh, hot holes were filled in north, hot holes were filled on North Milford Road, Rice, Downpourge, and Bain Tree Run uh was paved in the area of a sinkhole repair as well. Uh, crews responded to down trees on Norwood Road and Sharp Lane, and we are in the process of getting our plows and spreader, salt spreaders ready for the winter, so that we're ready for the winter of twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. Fire Marshal report.
Uh, yes, for the month of October, the building department issued a hundred and twenty-seven permits for construction activities. A total of a hundred and twenty-nine inspections were conducted, a total of five fire code inspections were conducted. Thirty-two use and occupancy certificates were issued, and the fire marshal responded to ten incidents during working hours and conducted three burning complaints. Uh, presentations were also conducted at the Township Elementary Schools and daycare centers during fire prevention week.
And the fire company?
Uh, for the month of October, Lineville Fire Company responded to fifty-six incidents during the month. Uh, thirty of those were in Euclid, eleven in Upper Euclid, three in West Plaquenil, and twelve in other municipalities for a total year-to-date of five hundred eighty-three.
Okay. And do we have someone from Euclid Ambulance? Oh, hello.
Secretary of the ambulance, everybody else is tied up tonight. Um, can I get a full report to somebody?
Oh, yes, sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
And rather than reading the full report, the bottom line is that for the month of October, we had four hundred and thirty-six calls, a hundred and fifty-three of those were in Euclid Township. So for the year to date, we're at four thousand one hundred and fifty-six calls. Uh, once again, Euclid Township is at one thousand three hundred and twenty-three. It's pretty clear that we are on track for a second year of over five thousand calls.
Wow.
Okay, we would also like to thank the board again for your contribution for our HVAC replacement, so.
Thank you so much. Um, can I get a motion to accept the reports as presented?
So moved.
A second.
Any comments or questions?
Okay.
Yep. Um, I know every month we sit up here and we accept the reports from our fire companies and our, our police officers and our EMTs through Euclid Ambulance, but I think we would be remiss if we didn't just take a moment to acknowledge um some of the things that have happened in our community in the last month. Um, on October twentieth, the community lost a volunteer firefighter, Colin Reedy, um, was killed in the line of duty responding to a fire call in our community, and fellow firefighter Emily Gendel was also seriously injured at that time. So I want to make sure that we extend our deepest condolences to the West White, West Whiteland Fire Company, as well as the entire first responder community at large. Um, and I also want to send our condolences to the Euclid Ambulance Corps on the loss of Judy Kaplan, who was a very long-time-serving volunteer in our community. Um, I think if you have ever interacted with our first responders, our medical personnel, or even if you haven't, um, you have been impacted by all of these individuals' contributions. And, you know, later tonight, we're going to take a look at the budget, and we're going to talk about the monetary value of these services and our obligation to provide them, but the reality is that we are entirely, as a community, um, indebted to the, the volunteers that give their time and um sometimes their lives to, to be there for us. So I hope you'll join us and acknowledge their, their sacrifices and what they do for us every day when we're not even thinking about them being there for us.
Thank, thank you, Laura. Um, with that, are there any other comments or questions about the reports? Any comments or questions from the public about the reports? Then I'll take a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Onto business, the first item of business is the twenty twenty-four Euclid Township Draft Budget Presentation.
Thank you, Chair. It's interesting that, you know, this year it kind of seems like it flew by, because it honestly, to me, feels like we were just having this discussion. So for the twenty twenty-three budget, um, just to kind of go over the whole process for everybody, um, what we're going to do today is kind of give a presentation, the, the meat and potatoes of the budget itself will actually be on uh the township website, so. Tom, after the presentation this evening, we're going to ask for permission to advertise from the Board of Supervisors. Once we receive that, we will put this on the township website. Um, later in the presentation, I'll show you the online portal that the township has, but um kind of recapping the whole process, uh, the township has held several budget workshop meetings throughout this year, focusing on uh individual departments as well as long-term capital planning, all of which have been incorporated into the budget, which to some extent continues to increase participation with the department heads as well as employees here at the township. Um, as mentioned, the draft budget will be posted to the website um for public view and comment, and then formally would be considered at a December meeting, which just to note is being rescheduled to Tuesday, uh, December nineteenth from uh December eleventh. So one of the things I wanted to show, and actually I may just quickly pop out of this, because um the twenty twenty-three budget is already, you know, it's obviously already live, it's for twenty twenty-four is coming up, and I wanted to point to a new software platform that the township turned to last year, which was ClearGov, uh, which are the township treasurers who Bernhard uh found, which was a way to kind of really create a budget document, like could just be tables full of numbers and create a document that I think the, the ordinary person can understand. Um, if you go tomorrow, the twenty twenty-four budget will be live, this is the twenty twenty-three budget, but it really gives a good background on um, not only the township, but our different funds, you know, you can click on whatever fund is what you're interested in reviewing. Um, this is the general fund, which is our main fund, but I really encourage people to check out the online um interface, because it's a very user-friendly um platform. Uh, so just a little background on the township, uh, the twenty twenty census has come and gone, and we are currently working on census estimates, so. Um, according to uh ClearGov, the township's population is nineteen thousand thirteen, which is down point eight percent from the twenty twenty census. Um, but as you can see in the graph here, that's kind of an anomaly, we've been seeing fairly steady growth pretty much since the uh mid about two thousand and eight. The daytime, daytime population of Euclid Township is twenty thousand eight hundred and fifty-three, and this includes people who are coming into the community to work, play, shop, entertainment, um, et cetera. Our population demographics by age show that a majority of our residents are between the age of forty-five and fifty-four, uh, with thirty-five and forty-four coming in a close second, followed by sixty-five to seventy-four. Turning to the, the housing and the properties in Euclid Township, in twenty twenty-one, the median um home value was four hundred and twenty-six thousand nine hundred, and as you can see from the graph, that has gone increasingly up since uh twenty fourteen. Um, when you look at the, the breakout between residents who both rent and own, seventy-four percent of our residents own their home, we're twenty-six percent rent. That's compared to thirty-one percent renting nationwide and sixty-nine percent owning nationwide. Um, as far as home value distribution, um, as someone who's actively looking for a home, I can tell you that it is very, very competitive out here in Chester County, and Euclid Township is no exception. Um, the majority of, of our home values fall in the four hundred to five hundred thousand dollar range, but that is followed closely by five hundred to seven hundred and fifty thousand. Um, every time I do this presentation, I do like to kind of go through tax rates, um, because we, we get one tax bill, but there really are three separate taxes that are in that, we have the uh county tax, the Euclid tax, and the Downingtown Area School District tax. Um, our tax rate has remained the same, um, I think for the last over thirty years, um, as part of the budget twenty twenty-four, we're not proposing a tax increase. Um, county taxes have increased over the years but are, are holding steady, um, and the Downingtown Area School District um continues to increase from uh around the twenty nineteen area. To put that in better perspective, and to look at an average tax bill for the township, about eighty-six point three percent of taxes collected are going to the Downingtown Area School District, thirteen point two percent are going to Chester County, uh, while point three four percent are going to Euclid Township. Just to quickly go over some of the funds that the township will have, uh, will showcase in the budget, uh, the general fund is the main operating fund for the township, um, and all transactions that are not accounted for in any other fund. Um, the hydrant fund, which some people may not even know exists, the hydrant fund um is collected as a portion of the real estate tax, uh, which is assessed to homeowners that have a fire hydrant within six hundred feet of their property. This assessment is used to pay the standby water charge for the hot um hydrants in the township by Aqua. Our sewer fund is cover, covers sewer rentals, tapping, and other fees that are collected to cover the costs of um our sewer mains and sewer infrastructure. Um, as mentioned earlier, the township is um split into the Eagleview Wastewater Treatment Plant Service Area, as well as the Downingtown Area Regional Authority. Uh, most of the township drains to Dara, but the Eagleview area and, and that general vicinity do drain to Eagleview, which is owned and operated by the township. Um. The Capital Improvement Fund is financed through transfers from the general fund, uh, most capital projects and equipment come from that fund, and the State Liquid Fuel Fund is a fund that we receive from the state of Pennsylvania to help maintain uh roads in the township. So looking at the projected revenue for twenty twenty-four by source, um, as you can see, just as in years past, the uh taxes account for seventy percent of our revenues for twenty twenty-four, followed by collection costs, permit, permits and licenses, state entitlements, and then so on. Um, when we look at the expenditures by function for the twenty twenty-four budget, uh, the police account for forty-four point one percent of uh budgeted expenditures, followed by trash and recycling, public works, highways and streets, administration, um, parks, and then it starts to get very chipped up here, but um all the way down through insurances, which is point six percent. I put this on the slide and immediately regretted it, so what I would like to um recommend to everybody is to go online and um, that obviously go through all of the different um tables and um breakouts and funds, but what I was hop- hoping to point to was um looking at our twenty twenty-four revenues and expenditures, um, the township will maintain its strong financial health, we are projecting a, a small surplus for next year in the general fund of four thousand eight hundred and fifty-one dollars. Uh, the hydrant fund, uh, will, or I mean, at a hundred sixty thousand going in, a hundred sixty thousand um going out for a zero dollar surplus, uh, the sewer fund uh will have a twenty-four thousand seven hundred and twenty-nine dollar surplus for twenty twenty-four, and the state liquid fuels will have a forty-two thousand six hundred and thirty-six dollar surplus. Uh, now, a lot of this is contingent on our road program for next year, which we're still finalizing, but we know that that's pretty set with a, um, the amount that we put in each year. Going specifically through some of these funds, um, you can't see it because the banner says, so the sewer fund, uh, the township's contributions to Dara have continued to rise over the last three years, uh, for twenty twenty-four, there will be an increase to uh one point four five million dollars for twenty twenty-four. Operating costs, the Eagleview Treatment Plant are expected to be approximately four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Um, unfortunately, because of this continued rise in costs for both Eagleview and Dara, the township will be proposing a six dollar per quarter sewer rate increase. Um, this will be solely for uh sewer, it will be billed out as trash and sewer, but if we're, this is definitely a increase to uh our sewer fee and not trash. Um, we inti- continue to anticipate large expenditures uh with our, our neighbors over at West White, West Whiteland, where we jointly own the Clover Mill Pump Station. Um, we're expecting the boot road force main project to finally start. Um, Dara is also looking at expanding their capacity, so we're working with them on that process now. They're also undergoing some significant infrastructure upgrades to assist with the flooding that has happened there over the years. Um, and our own treatment plan, as mentioned in my report earlier, is having its own issues, um, we're working with Gannett to resolve them, however, not a single one of these issues is a, is a cheap process, so um unfortunately, we did not want to, but I, unfortunately, we have to raise the, the sewer fee for next year. So looking at our liquid fuel fund, we do expect the allocation from the state to be around five hundred seventy-eight thousand seven hundred and ninety-six dollars. Um, we also, in addition to that, get twenty-six thousand dollars for, from the turnback program from the state of Pennsylvania for a total of six hundred and five thousand and thirty-six dollars. Uh, we will be setting aside seventy-five thousand dollars for snow removal, um, ninety-six thousand for general roadway maintenance, not including the road improvement plan, but we're setting aside four hundred thousand dollars for that. The hydrant fund, the township has four hundred and fifty-two hydrants. Um, over the last several years, revenues have been, or revenues, funds have been transferred from the water fund uh to help offset the cost of, of the, the fee that we have to pay to Aqua for the standby water for those hydrants. This has continued to increase, and while there's not an expected increase from Aqua for twenty twenty-four, it's something that we continue to watch, because our water fund continues to deplete, and without some form of revenue source, eventually we'll be talking about that fund being depleted with no revenue to replace it, so we're going to be looking at that over the next several years, I think we have a few years left. Um, but it is one of the things that we're evaluating is how to kind of replace that once we um expand the water fund. And the Capital Improvement Fund, that historically has been a fund that the township is underfunded, however, um, we have done a much better job at looking at any surplus for the years and making sure that they go back to the Capital Improvement Fund, which funds things such as vehicle purchases, um, and all of the, the, the different items that we've talked about, every of the budget workshops for capital um long-term needs. To, in conclusion, I mean, it's always a good thing when I can say that we're not raising taxes, I feel like that's a much easier sell to the, to everybody in the room. Um, but I will say that we are going to continue to look at revenue sources as time goes on, because everything continues to get more expensive, and we have a very tight uh budget. Um, after tonight's meeting, if the board grants permission to advertise the budget, this will be available on our township website, we will be making sure that it's a news alert and published on our social media channels. Um, and if for any, anybody needs a physical copy, they can always stop by the township and we'll make one available. Um, and like I had mentioned earlier, the, just note that December meeting has been uh rescheduled to the nineteenth of December, uh, but this will be up for formal consideration at that meeting, so I encourage everybody, I will stop this long-winded look at our funds, but please do look at the online portal that we have um, online tomorrow, and if there's any questions, you can always reach out to myself or Sue Bernhard.
Great, thank you so much, Scott Greenly. Um, we'll just go ahead and move on to item number two, which is permission to advertise the draft budget. So, can I get a motion?
Go ahead and motion that we advertise the draft twenty twenty-four Euclid Township budget?
A second.
Are there any comments or questions?
No.
Just that I think the staff did a fantastic job this year, like Mr. Greenly had stated, we have been talking budget since the beginning of the year, it's just an ongoing process, and uh I think it's a wonderful document that gives the public a great look into what goes into it, what comes out of it, and where the township as a whole is, is, so thank you very much for your hard work.
Just wanted to echo that, because I wanted to thank Sue Bernhard, who's put a lot of effort into this year's budget. Um, she's done a, just an amazing job of making the budget much more transparent, so, thank you, Sue.
Yeah, thank you so much, Sue. Um, are there any comments or questions from the public? Then I'll go ahead and take a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. So we'll be voting on that next month to approve it. Uh, next item of business, twenty twenty-four SPCA contract.
So this is a yearly contract, um, it is for animal acquisition and housing of stray animals. The Chester County Municipal Managers Group, um, we all review these documents and believe to this to be a fair contract for all the parties involved.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the twenty twenty-four SPCA contract?
So moved.
Yeah, sorry.
Um, Mark, I'm just kind of just really, I'm looking at you. That one's published, I don't see it, it's like, I don't think it's allowed to be published until the so.
The, the SPCA contract, it's not item number three?
Not the one I just listed.
No.
Thousand.
Oh, so it's different.
Published.
Oh. So we have, we have two options.
I so, and I have it, yeah, three, you have it on the list?
Well, I have it.
Right. Please. We can postpone it, they could take, you, you can, under the law that passed about eighteen months ago, so.
I would, I don't know if we should postpone it, just because um, there's a due date on here for the contract, and we, since we're meeting on December nineteenth, this is due the fifteenth. So I don't.
So you could, what you can do is you can make a vote, take a vote to add it to the agenda, do a vote on that, and then, and, and this would be one of those emergent situations where you can do that, and then, once you do that, then you can vote on.
I'll make a motion to add the twenty twenty-four SPCA contract to the November thirteenth agenda.
A second.
Any, uh, all in favor? Or any questions or comments?
No.
No, any questions or comments? All in favor, oh. It's the SPCA, the Brandywine, oh my gosh, what's it stand for? SPCA, it's the Brandywine Valley.
We're voting.
We're voting to add it to the agenda? Yeah. Um.
We're ju- right, we're ju-
We're just trying to put it on the agenda right now. Uh, all in favor of putting this item on the agenda?
Aye.
Aye, okay, motion passes, all right, now we'll talk about the contract.
So, um, like I said, this is a yearly contract for animal acquisition and housing of stray animals in the township. Um, the Chester County Municipal Managers Group um all reviewed the contract, because each municipality got this contract as well for their municipalities, um, and all believe that this is a fair contract for all parties involved.
Okay, so can I get a motion to approve the uh twenty twenty-four SPCA contract?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions from the board? Any comments or questions from the public?
What, what is the town giving standing word in this? Yeah, what, what is the server?
Stray animals. So if the, we don't have, the township does not provide animal control, so this is the animal control that, that we provide for the residents. So that's what that is, you're welcome.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Uh, next item of business, the Shimonah Peck Park Nature Play Proposal. Very exciting.
I'm just excited it's actually on the agenda.
Uh huh.
Um, the township has been discussing uh pretty much since pretty much since our comprehensive plan that we passed back in twenty twenty, we've been looking at our, the recreational opportunities that we offer uh our residents, and obviously, we've started to expand a little bit, because we just two months ago opened the Ted Jacobson Senior Park that has pickleball and all, all sorts of new activities for our residents. Um, one of the things that we've continued to talk about internally is the concept of nature play, um, which kind of is what it sounds like, which, but, you know, it's funny, because I think when I was a kid, I mean, that was pretty much just playing, go play and, and the cricket and everything, but um, we have been working with Ed Thero Cost Office, who is our landscape architect, um, to look at a proposal for nature play at the Shimonah Peck Park, the smaller of the two Shimonah Parks. Um, right now, the equipment there is in very bad condition, um, we've been discussing actually taking it out because of the splinter risk there. Um, so what this proposal would do is give us a plan and a concept for nature play at Shimonah. Um, the Um, the proposal itself is broken into two sections. Um, and at this point, I'm asking for the board's permission to ratify this contract um, in the amount of nineteen thousand seventy dollars. Um, and what this will help us do is create a site assessment base plan, a site development plan, and a bid package and administration of the bid.
Okay. Alright, can I get a motion to approve the Shimonah Peck Park Nature Play Proposal?
So moved.
I'll second.
Are there any comments or questions from the board?
One question.
Yeah.
Greenlee, once we come back after the proposal's gone out, I assume that our township committees, such as Parks and Rec and EAC, will get input onto the different elements. Mark, can you talk a little bit about the next steps?
Yep. So we're looking at creating an ad hoc committee, uh, that includes both, um, the environmental advisory committee council, um, as well as the park and recreation, uh, committee. Um, we're in the process of getting that set up right now. But once we have that, absolutely, and I have no doubt this will continue to include public comment throughout the process because this is not necessarily a, a very well-known, um, recreational offering from township. So, uh, we will do our best to make sure that we involve all parties this process.
Thank you. I'm very much looking forward to seeing this.
Yeah, well, I'll be hearing a lot about nature playing in the next several months. Um, are there any comments or questions from the public? Nope. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you. Next item, Hankin Market at Eagleview Town Center, request for a conditional use hearing.
Uh, yes, that is pretty much exactly what it is. I did receive an application from the Hankin Group um, for conditional use uh, hearing request, um, in order to consider changes to their master plan um, for town center. They are proposing a multi-story twenty-six thousand eight hundred eighteen square foot building um, next to the AC AC in Eagleview Town Center. Uh, fourteen thousand square foot of that would be a market and then there will be forty-one apartments above the market. Um, the request is to have the hearing scheduled for the January eighth order supervisors meeting. This would give the applicant time to come to the December Planning Commission meeting as well as January if necessary.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve, uh, the Hankin Market at Eagleview Town Center request for conditional use hearing?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any comments or questions from the board? Any comments or questions from the public?
Can I also just add that, uh, copy of the plan will be posted to the website tomorrow, uh, for the public to view.
Okay, and there'll be plenty of ti- cha- chances for public input in the, at the planning commission meetings and also at the January board meeting. Um, any other comments or questions? Nope, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Onto the resolutions, the twenty twenty-three uh, resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-two, police pension admin expenses.
So this is an annual resolution that the board passes yearly, um, for, just as said, the payment of administrative expenses for the pension plan for twenty twenty-two. Um, the administrative expenses for twenty twenty-two were two thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars and thirty-six cents.
Can I get a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-two, police pension and admin expenses?
I'll second.
Any comments or questions? Any comments or questions from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-three, police employee contributions for twenty twenty-four.
So this is another an- annual resolution that the township passes every year. Um, and for twenty twenty-four, starting January first, twenty twenty-four, um, employees, employee contributions to the police pension plan will be three point five percent.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-three, the employees, police employee contributions for twenty twenty-four set at three point five percent? Is that what you just said?
Three point five percent, yep.
Yes.
So moved.
I'll second.
Any comments or questions? Are there any comments or questions from the public? All in favor? Aye, motion passes. Onto the hearings for this evening. The first hearing we have tonight is Cav- Calvary Chapel of Chester Springs. Uh, their rezoning request. I'm going to hand it over to Mark Freed.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and, um, I see we have, um, counsel for the church here this evening. Um, just, uh, by way of introduction, this is a continuation of the hearing on the application of Cavalry Chapel, Chester Springs for zoning change request in order to rezone a portion of the property at two one seven Down and Forge Road, uh, which is currently zoned both PC planned commercial and RI low density residential to an highly planned commercial as well as the acquired adjacent parcels at two nineteen and two two one Down and Forge Road from R one to PC so that the parcels can be consolidated. Um, before we get started, I do have two additional exhibits that I want to add, uh, to the exhibit list. Um, Board Exhibit fourteen is a declaration of restrictive covenants to land use and development dated October twenty ninth, twenty twenty-three. And Board Exhibit fifteen is a zoning exhibit plan uh, for a proposed parking lot expansion prepared by Powell Surveying dated October second, twenty twenty-three. Um, so this is a continuation of a hearing that started a few months ago. Um, one of the issues that was, there were, there was basically an issue of timing. Um, as we mentioned earlier, it's the intent, you know, the stated intent of the church to consolidate the properties. Uh, one of the difficulties was is that the zoning change comes prior to the consolidation. So the question then becomes mechanically, how do you make sure that the consolidation actually happens? We're able to work with church council and come up with a, um, proposed restrictive covenant that essentially says so long as, um, a zoning change occurs as anticipated, uh, prior to the end of twenty twenty-four, the, the properties will be consolidated. Um, and in addition, there were some questions from the board about just getting a general, a general sketch plan, um, idea of what the development was going to look like, which the church also provided. So those two things are done. Um, so I don't know if there's anything more that the, the church would like to add.
Not specific. We have to answer any questions.
Does the board have any questions?
I do not.
No.
Does the public have any questions? Or comments? Okay, with that, if the board, I'm sorry.
No.
If the board is so inclined, they can pass a resolution, uh, approving the uh, rezoning of the parcels that we mentioned earlier.
Mark. It is an ordinance. Um, it would be ordinance number twenty twenty-three.
I'm sorry, did I say resolution? My apologies. An ordinance, they can pass an ordinance uh, allowing the rezoning, uh, of the three parcels that we referenced.
So, do we, we need a motion to?
Yeah, you would need a motion to say.
I don't have an ordinance right here. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Um, okay, can I get a motion for ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash oh five, granting a zoning official ju- amending the official zoning map of UCLAN Township to rezone the parcel known as Chester County Uniform Parcel Identifier number thirty-three dash four dash nineteen point one.
So moved.
There's more. Parcel known as Chester County Uniform Parcel Identifier number thirty-three dash four dash nineteen point one A and a part of the parcel known as Chester County Uniform Parcel Identifier number thirty-three dash four dash nineteen point two from the R one low density residential district to the PC planned commercial district. There you go.
Okay, so moved.
Are there any comments or questions?
I, um, I want to say I appreciate the willingness of the applicants to work with township. Um, obviously there's a lot of questions and we hear a lot of public comment, um, relevant to this rezoning and the future uses for the church. Um, I'm happy to support it this evening and I also think that as this process moves forward, we do have some work cut out during the conditional use that will benefit all of us collectively as a community and I look forward to that process.
And I will note that there'll be obviously conditional use as well as land development. So there'll be plenty of more opportunity to actually look at the specifics of what the development's going to look like.
Are there any other comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? I'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Thank you.
Um, the second hearing tonight is for Tilson Infrastructure and PA Turnpike Commission, exit three twelve.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. So at the, at the applicant's request, that hearing is being moved to the next uh, board meeting, which is been rescheduled for December nineteenth. It had previously been on the, the calendar for December eleventh, but it's going to be December nineteenth, so that'll be board, both the board of supervisors meeting as well as the hearing on the application.
Great.
That's it. Um, I'm going to go ahead and read through the announcements before I open up the meeting, uh, to the public for comments. On eleven sixteen, the Environmental Advisory Council will meet here at seven PM. On November twenty-second, township offices close at noon. On, uh, November twenty-third, Thanksgiving holiday, township office will be closed and Thanksgiving the next day, the twenty-fourth, will also be closed. December fourth, the board of supervisors will have our workshop meeting here at twelve PM noon. On December sixth, the planning commission will meet at seven thirty and December nineteenth will be the next board of supervisors meeting at seven thirty. Just a reminder, that's rescheduled from the regular second Monday of the month. Uh, so it's going to be on the nineteenth in December. And now I'll go ahead and open up the meeting to the public for comments. Oh. Did anyone sign in?
Yeah, there's one here.
Okay. Okay. Um, we do have a signup sheet in the back if anyone ever wants to sign up. Oh, the pen that was missing. Somebody brought their own pen. Uh, Michelle, stray, stray lawn? Stray horn?
The zoning hasn't been changed and we haven't looked at that. I just want you to take into consideration within one thirteen, it could be a point we did.
Mm-hmm.
We have to go four ways to get out of there.
Mm-hmm.
And we're taking our life into our own hands. I came before this board back on August twenty-first, twenty nineteen and I never heard anything about it or it better. I had signatures from all the residents stating that, you know, you gave your option or suggested to you that these have Billy Way Farm and the strip mall. We're not chilling with this to turn right. We, we never got any answer to anything. Now, with this land being put up again for sale, we just want you to take consideration of our rural area before we get killed either turning into our development by getting rear-ended with more traffic, you know, it was it's really bad. So, since this property is going back up for sale with this new traffic pattern, that's one that come with it, whatever ends up there, we don't change prior to that. So, please consider our issue with your travel.
Will do. Thank you very much.
To get some answers on it plus back in twenty nineteen, no one got back to us.
Twenty nineteen was.
I first came. This is the second time I've, I've been brought this to your attention.
About Lival Station Farm or no?
Thirteen.
In one thirteen, okay. I'm not sure. Yeah, thank you very much for bringing your comment. Um, are there any other comments? Hello?
Um, since we're now starting again, the trash process, uh, that Lingle Station Farm, um, I've encouraged the school board to open up discussions so that there's input, and I've also uh, encouraged them to have a forum that brings all the state leaders together, you guys, them, public. Um, and to see this as an opportunity to to think like broader and what you know, what are the possibilities? And one of those things is the possibility of actually zoning part or whole of that property. But like, we, we have a forum or place where we can just like all just talk opposed to having a lot of one-sided you know, unit direction law kind of discussion. So I just want to encourage the board to, uh, be careful of that process. The school board uh, seems to be willing, right? We as the public are definitely willing, so that's the, you guys can consider that as well.
Yeah.
Proceed.
Yeah, I just want to make sure you guys know that your, their voices are definitely being heard and the township, we have reached out to the school district. Yeah, so we are in communication, which is, which is definitely a good thing and both parties know, uh, you know, that the residents are opposed to the previous plan. Uh, um, you know, we're going to go from there, but we are trying to work together. Yeah. Yeah, I know it's hard to go to school board meetings and, and township meetings, but, uh, yeah.
Bye.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments from the public? Oh, of course.
And I wanted to thank Miller, the Dean Chuck Muggie on Article seventy-two. I've read all fifteen testings. Thirteen of them were really in favor of two of them. What I expected would be sort of opposed to it. And I think it's a really sensitive thing where we look at regionalish air quality doesn't shock the balance. Water quality doesn't stop. And so, so I think that it's important that surrounding townships, not just ours, but throughout the state, really have a way, you know, to have some kind of legal standing house. Uh, and input into that process and that the township that is working with this uh, rule or deny has some legal rationale to consider this. So I thank you.
Well, thank you.
Sure. Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments or questions from the public? Nope. Then I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Have a good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for coming.